Well, good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock and we have a quorum.
So I think I will call the meeting to order.
The first order of business is to approve the agenda today and like to ask that we approve it with a slight amendment, which is that item four A actually doesn't require a vote. It's not noted on the printed agenda. So is there a move to a motion to approve the board meeting agenda with that slight change?
To make a motion to approve.
All right, moved and seconded.
Down there, so I moved over.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is public discussion. Are there members of the public who would like to address the board? There seem not to be. Okay, well, now we move on to the aforementioned and very exciting item four A. Elsward, do you want to give us a little background here?
Sure. So you're looking at the budget, a document we call the budget interview. It's basically the operational budget we've put together for next fiscal year with sort of some budget lines condensed to give you an overview of what we're what we're going to the city to ask for as far as the budget. In the kickoff meeting for the budget, we were asked to prepare as close to a flat budget as possible, including inflation, you know, with with no, no, only, only excluding personnel from that, that request. You could see that we did not offer a truly flat budget. We tried to get as close as we could, being mindful of something, some critical things like service contracts and the cost of basic supplies are are high enough that we felt like, at least for the first conversation, we're going to put where we truly think we're going to stop. We did also make sort of a priority list, stick with us to the first meeting that we'll have with budget so that we can talk through, if we happen to get down to a zero percent increase, you know, here are the things that we feel the most strongly about maintaining. But this is the package that we intend to present to finance. This is what we've entered into munis. The deadlines this year and most years don't line up perfectly for our process, but I did let finance know that we had a meeting tonight and if any changes were requested by the board, we would need to be able to go back into the financial software and update that. So we have entered it, the deadline has passed, but we they know that we could come back and ask for for a time to update that. Where there were sort of gross paintings, we did add small notes. I think our biggest overall overage is that miscellaneous commodities, where we put the thirty thousand dollars for clock replacement, that's not a typo, and twenty thousand dollars for the book returns. I I think everything else is probably relatively self-explanatory with inflation and other changes, but we're more than happy to talk through the key points so people have a question.
New clocks are so expensive. Yes, I heard that.
How many clocks do we get for thirty?
So that would be seven clocks, and what that cost covers is the mechanisms, the antenna on the roof and the install of the antenna on the roof, and the calibration to set them all in the beginning. It does not include the installation of each clock, but that's something that our facilities team could do. If this comes back as an issue with the city, we there, you know, we could have another solution. We think this is the best the best product for public service, but if we need to, we could we we could find an alternate solution. Any alternate solution requires more staff time and more up and down on the ladder and battery changing and all that stuff. But if this isn't possible right now, we could, we could figure out an alternative. The book returns are a little less negotiable because we are concerned that we're getting to a sort of public safety level with those. If that's not possible right now, I think I'd ask facilities to take a look and see if they or a vendor could, if there's any repair that could be made, anything that could sort of tighten up those rusty edges and and get us through a couple more years, but I feel pretty strongly that it's time for those to be replaced.
Do you mean like east side, like the high V or like the east side of the building?
East side, I have a.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was wondering about the personnel increases, given what you mentioned about inflation, that's something, you know, personnel feel significantly, is that significant enough? Is that? And I don't know what past years have been for increases.
So personally, the one area of our budget that is managed by the city as far as the entry into munis, so this takes into account the cost of living, puts in the union contract and any step increases that library staff would have. So this does cover the normal increase. It does not cover anything extra for additional inflation months.
What is the cost of living piece?
Two, two percent?
It's two, it's two percent.
Two percent this year.
And is that a set or?
It's negotiated. Oh, a set number of years with the union contract.
They have a five year and the last year of the contract is there, it can be reopened for wages. For the first four years.
Yeah, so this was negotiated before we remember that inflation happens.
Usually you have a time going to that from the person.
Yeah.
Do you know what year we're at, like that five year? Do you any? Oh, so we're not at a year where we could even negotiate?
Two or three.
Not at a point that.
Yeah, we, that was during COVID when that was passed, so it's, we're early.
I'm, yeah, either year two or three, I believe, and I honestly, I don't know if the union could petition to reopen early. I'm I'm not sure what the process is.
Who is our union steward now?
They're having a leadership change.
I don't know if our steward has changed or not. I know that the the overall local asking that we're part of has changed the 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 big leadership positions, but we haven't learned yet if our steward has changed. So as as far as I know, Terry Byers is still the acting steward, but it, I know that they have a conversation. And and Loma's the secretary to the children's.
And so there's no expected reopening like we did, our teachers' union has a three to five year contract, but we stipulate opening wages annually, but that's not a part of this at all.
I don't remember seeing us stipulating those.
Okay.
The fifth year of the by kind of check that they want.
And every one of the city is in the same union except fire and police, right?
Correct, but ask me, it's split. There's a transit section because transit has different bargaining rights under the privacy code versus the rest of the state.
Okay, so it would be bigger than just the library staff being involved.
Right, right, right. Elsward, thank you. The consultants line is going up since strategic planning.
And that was a question I had also. That's our plan for strategic.
Three, two, oh, six, oh.
Down on page two slash page five of the package, page two. The top.
Yeah, some of that consultants is used for IT, right? Consulting, is that where your consulting work come from?
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of that is separate, we're standing IT consultancy and I think we put a a small increase for strategic plan and other projects that we might do with an outside of the software.
Back to personnel, and I, if I remember correctly, that we went with the city's benefits package. Do we see like a dramatic change in that overall across, or is it basically the same?
So I think that there have been a significant cost in in the city's part of insurance that has not been known to staff at this point. So our insurance, out of pocket costs have not changed. I mean, the for better, like, part of the current has not caught up. Opening moment does start next month, so we may learn more or different, but.
I mean, it's not a very dramatic difference, but just wondering if that's going to play a role as the benefits change. But.
What is longevity? What, I don't understand that.
Is a budget turn.
Buy some?
Yeah.
I'd buy some, but.
Look, I I believe longevity is that after certain amounts of years, people get an increase, is it an increase of a one time? I haven't been here long enough to. So starting at five years, when you hit milestone years, you get additional.
It's a salary deadline.
Yeah, like a a bonus kind of line. And our.
The last question.
Will go.
Down if you have retirees.
Some sort of like a yearly bonus.
And termination is just like, I mean, it it's not occurring this year, last year, but it's occurred in the past. There's a buyout for or it's hard to, I just didn't know what that was. I mean, I know what termination is, but I don't know why it costs.
It's two lines combined. Is that unemployment term and possibly like accrual payout?
I was gonna say.
I don't know if I know.
Vacation payout.
I could dig into it for a month. It was like eight thousand. My my guess is that it would be.
And that would make sense because of that fiscal year nineteen high number for the COVID closure when we did have to per lower number of staff.
Wanted to just make a clarification. Next year and the that fiscal year, it's two point two five percent for an increase wages and then the following year it's two percent. Okay.
It was also, I was very surprised by how low the amount is. In fact, it's zero. I think this this year for equipment repair and maintenance supply. So that's on page one of the budget here, and it's forty six, six, oh, three, oh, and two, something else, but I'm sorry, forty six, seven, oh, two, oh.
Yeah, my guess is that's just a line that we've shifted away from using because we certainly have repair and maintenance costs. I'm guessing that it was moved into a different supplier repair section of the budget.
Yes, also, as we go forward, sanitation supplies kind of really up. We were sanitizing through COVID. Are we seeing still increased need of, I mean, I know the cost of things has also gone up, but are you still seeing that high need for sanitation supplies, et cetera?
We we budgeted as if we would continue buying masks because we weren't sure. And I think that it's not as much the volume anymore, but it's the increased prices that make that. And our use of masks and our use of cancerous matter have gone down very significantly, but we do still want to have that option.
Right, in case we do have the triple threat like they're saying potentially this year.
Other questions for Elsward? Discussion? With a promotion to approve?
We don't need to, I thought.
We amended the agenda.
Oh, I was very confused when you said amend the agenda to say we don't need to take extra, like, but it already says that. Clearly, I didn't know what I was voting on.
So, yeah, so for a does in fact need a a vote and DJ is. And a second.
Now that I know what we're doing.
One more note about this, because we are some of our autonomous department, the board has more control over our budget than than other departments have a different hierarchy of of who owns this. So if we were to get to the middle of the year and and needed to do a shift within these budget lines, this group has the authority to do that. So we do have, you know, we we try not to, but it does mean that if if there was another pandemic or something, we could shift resources accordingly as long as the board was agreeable to it. Which I think is a a real benefit about for the year for the budget total.
Yes, I have one more comment, not, and we're still, I'm still approving, but just kind of interested by the IT hardware, software being zero, is that we're just, I mean, all during the budget, we're talking about IT, different expenses that we're seeing, like moving into cloud computing and that was, is that just coming out of a different line? Maybe that we have zero on this budget for IT hardware and software, but I assume we're still spending plenty on IT upgrade and keeping it things up to date. Am I just confused? Well, just on the main budget, it's in the operating, overall operating budget, it's hard to the very end, capital expenditure. Oh, is that just?
Yeah, let's see, capital.
Okay, I just can't read a budget.
No, it's confusing the way it's, you and I have aspirations to make this a little more user friendly. And we do have, there's a, there's been a.
Okay, it's elsewhere in here that I didn't. Okay.
Yeah, there are, there are a couple other lines.
Okay. Oh, here we go, miscellaneous computer, software, hardware, et cetera, house. Chuck. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're it was just capital expenditures. And I was confused. All right.
CIP is part of this as well, right? The two CIPs or?
We're not reflected in such a separate budget process.
Okay. Yeah, the number continues with these pages.
Okay, we already, we already.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table. Anything else to ask? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Thank you.
The the next piece of the budget discussion is the, we included the CIP forms just as informative. You have seen the version in the carpet many times. This is not a new one, but the boardroom and meeting room renovation is a new one. We're just trying to be proactive in making sure we don't miss out on that preventative maintenance and end up in a place that we have more emergency needs, so it's like we face in the table or the cabinets are are cleaned up, things like that. We wanted to get it in now, in case it takes any creative discussion to pass it through. And then the the last part of this part of the finance discussion is our first quarter financial statistics. I feel like the budget, the budget to me feels great. Right now it feels very healthy. It feels like it's what work could be. You'll see, we did do some bulk purchasing, they're trying to cut off inflation costs on a few things that we felt like we could sort of get a handle on. But otherwise, it's it's about where I would expect. The year is very young. We'll see how we feel on the middle. But right now, I mean, especially kind of remembering the the COVID expense years, it feels more normal and manageable. And I thought it sort of spoke for itself, but of course, happy to answer any questions that that we didn't pull out and answer here.
Did our newly formed finance committee meet?
We did not.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't, I didn't have questions for them. Just curious if that happened.
Any other questions about that first quarter? Okay, well, I think that's to staff reports. Starting with Elsward's.
I have two small additions. You know, after the publication of the packets. One is just a a quick and fun one. The club mall playground is open for business. It's not completely finished till they're putting in the the shade the shade holes before winter, well, it'll be done soon, and then the summer shade will be added in the spring. They, I think that they figured why put it out? Have a winter, winter wear when we could wait for winter. And we've, I mean, Andrew gets to see it, but the rest of us out the window, but so far the feedback is good and it's really fun to have it back, so we're pleased about that. The second was Noah Kim has resigned from the board. And we will be filling that vacancy as soon as possible. It will be in the next council packet, so that's next week, the meeting. And what what happens in this kind of situation is the standing applications are revisited, but new applications can also be submitted. So I would, with sort of the current climate in public libraries, I think this is a great time to think about your own networks and your own communities. And if you have people that you think would be a good fit for the the library board, it's a great time to sort of invite them to apply and pass on the information. It is a vacancy that that should be filled by a female, I don't know, fine person, so that's the only limiting factor for the seat. It is, it's it's like a full five year seat, so it's a little shortened, but it's not a good fit for somebody who's like, I'd like to do that, but not for a full six years. It's almost a full, so.
You know, when those applications are due?
I don't, I can find out. So I think that they're announcing the vacancy.
I got you.
At next week's meeting and then then they'll take applications.
Okay.
Otherwise, happy to answer any questions folks have from the report.
Is there anything, since you wrote this on the drag queen story hour, that's?
The only update is the Iowa City Human Rights Commission released a statement of support. I emailed that out. I didn't know they were working on that, but
That's great.
But of course, we appreciate the support. And I thought that they did a great job sort of tying it into broader issues and illustrating not just about, you know, that to the library, this impacts, I thought, especially you, it's kind of threw out what you're gonna be, which, well, I think is a healthy way to do it. I think I shared with the board, I actually didn't get any community feedback after the event until the newspaper article came out. And then I heard from a handful of people, but not anywhere near the volume I expected. Because I hear from people all the time about all, about tons of programs and anything, but this one just didn't. People felt just to reach out, so I'm not, I didn't get a really clear temperature check with people afterwards, but I'm hoping that at this point we're beyond sort of the hump of that. It was, it was pretty tough for the staff that were involved, and I think that there was sort of a secondary ripple of staff that weren't there. But, you know, we said several emails sort of saying, this is what happened, this is how we're processing it, this is our next step. So I think that for both those that were actively involved and everybody else, it was kind of a reality check of this can't happen in Iowa City. It's, it's, you know, all of the prep work we've done around an electoral freedom. This is why. Ands that sort of just we need to continue to be vigilant. We do have another drag queen story time tentatively planned for February around Valentine's Day. My hope is that that will be a children's event, sort of as a family event as intended, and that we will not have half a room full of adults, either in support or not in support. It's really intended to be a community event for kids and families who are there to participate, so.
Will that be a weekend again?
It's Saturday.
All right.
Part of me likes to think that after midterm elections, that it will be like a non-issue entirely and we'll go back to. You had it before with the zero. Six times, so part of me thinks that midterm elections are what in that your February event will just be a lovely midwinter dance party, which is what it should be.
We did, in with previous events, I've, I've called the police chief and just sort of said, hey, we're having this event, we haven't heard any issues, but just to let you know. And this was the first time I did not do that, but felt like it's always been fine.
Here, here.
Yeah.
It was closed, I had a farmer's market, but.
And luckily, we were both able to get in very quickly. But next time I will reach out proactively and and Dustin and I will decide together, do, should we have someone here to change? Should we just have something turned on call? What does that look like? In the situation that just happened, I do feel like if an officer had come into that room, I believe it would have escalated things in a potentially unpleasant and scary way. It's gonna be scary for like the kids involved.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I think we will have a dialogue before the next one, and we also keep a pretty close eye on social media to sort of see if there's any dialogue beforehand, but we're all hoping that it goes back to one of September.
simultaneous police officer touch a truck program. It just happens to be the day.
You know, it it sounded like you and Angie and the staff were present, handled it really well. Any lessons about how to how to handle an event like that?
Well, we had one of the city attorneys come to our next leadership team meeting and kind of walk through decisions that were made, make sure that we were finding that balance between free speech and our, you know, first amendment rights and library use policy. And in retrospect, I feel like we did everything right. She really helped clarify with us, you know, it's, it's about, you have to focus on the behavior that's happening, not the ideology, so if you're blocking access to strollers, that's what we're going to talk about, right? Not talking about why you're there, it's just you've got to let them stir. This, like, like frequent things at the library, I think what's hard is trying to sort of quantify or apply to the policy that general harassment of staff. So how much do we ask staff to take as far as being called groomers or being called pedophiles or being, you know, these offensive things that people may say? How much of that is our role to be able to just sort of deflect and say we're going to disagree on that and that we need to move forward? Or when do we escalate it? And we talked with the attorney about that. There's not a lot of black and white guidelines, but I would say that as the as the library director, that's my major concern is making sure that staff feel informed and empowered to to know where that line might be and what to do if things step over it. Because, yes, we celebrate and protect First Amendment rights, but that doesn't mean that staff can be abused or harassed. Though they also suggested, the attorney, that if there was any part of the policy that that felt like it might warrant a revisit, and not because anything was done wrong, but because it seemed to be sort of heat points for us was whether or not we wanted to say anything about holding signs, whether in the library or in programs, or to look at what we say about videotaping in the library. It it sort of makes me nervous to even bring that one up because I think enforcement is so complex. Anytime somebody has a cell phone out, most staff have to go have a dialogue. But I think it's absolutely worth the conversation, and maybe there are creative solutions that I don't know about yet. But the signage one is something I hadn't thought about, and we could certainly look at that next time we look at library use or before, if we want to.
Those both sound like hard ones to to figure out. Did they disrupt it all verbally? I mean, did did they interrupt the program in a, in a direct confrontational way?
I would say not in a comfortable, not in a not, not in a dramatic way. They sort of talked about normal speaking voice sort of constantly. And Angie, I was standing right in front of them. Sometimes it was sort of like, you know, what? And Angie and I were standing right in front of them, sometimes it was sort of like, you know, we'll keep talking, keep talking like.
They did the same thing over and over again, just so that they could be talking.
But I I do believe that they were aware of, sort of aware of the general rights that they had and the laws around it, um. But no, there was no yelling, there was no chanting, um I think that there were louder voices of the lobby beforehand, um. And I wasn't there for that. I I got here sort of right into the program, we're about to start, um and that had been managed already by library staff.
Well, I will say that um. I did uh see a video that one of them took, um and I specifically, Ellsworth, I saw you and Angie. Um standing. Between them and everyone and. I know it's a profoundly difficult situation to be in, but frankly, to see the two of you and all of staff handle it how you did. That stood very tall for me. I don't know how else to put it, and it's very much appreciated, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks for saying that. I I was um really struck by Mary's points as the facilitator of the program. But she, I mean, it's hard enough to sing in front of an audience, period, and to add that pressure, I mean, she really um. So perfect in her approach, um and some of those staff were not even called to the room, they sort of. They walked by or heard something was happening and just thought, I'm going to join that now as a be present and. You know, help hand out, shake her eggs and things like that. To me, that felt like the most successful part of sort of. Kind of lower the impact was just having more staff face into the room so that people knew. If they did want to, if they needed to say something to one of us, we were right there. There were plenty of us that could be grabbed, um and. I also felt like it was important to. Sort of as each person walked by us to thank them for coming and to sort of make the eye contact and acknowledge like. We're glad you're here and we're trying to keep it as close as possible, so.
It was a Mr. Rogers moment, look for the helpers. Making also on Ellsworth's director's report. We can move on to the Children's Services Report. Anything to highlight or add?
I'm just trying to just make sure you put December ninth on your calendars as the board. You guys are invited to the annual service day at Jason. Good morning, we'll be strategic planning, um. Ellsworth and Becky Hile from the State Library will be leading that um in the morning, so that is for our brand new strategic plan, so. Um board members. Good for you guys to be there to help for the next five years. And then in the afternoon, we'll be doing. Breakfast, lunch.
That Council's Board Development.
Yes.
So you're looking for those opportunities.
Okay, and Collection Services? Anything, any questions?
I wouldn't say that the bibliography period on intellectual freedom is really useful. So thank you for that.
And did you have a good turnout at the um? At the. I L A, yeah, I L A.
We did, and there were several board members during one coming to the city, were down for it as well as. Good to see trustees engaged.
What else? Glowed on yourself. Do you get to go? What else?
Might be doing a webinar.
It was brilliant.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I mean, having been a public librarian in the middle of nowhere, um. I wouldn't have been able to get away to do an I L A, so a webinar would be really useful to people all over the rural. The mostly rural state that we have, so um yeah, that'd be definitely a great industry.
Even doing this work, I mean, the second part of my board's report about genre label changes and even doing this work ourselves, just doing more research and thinking through some of the practices that we have at the library. Some change to be made based on reading that intellectual freedom manual, looking at the interpretation, really scrutinizing. Bibliography and the genre.
I like the deliberation with which you explained those label changes and everything, I think most people would look at like, yeah, whatever. But realistically, you explain why it matters now for it, so thank you.
I think a lot of times collection services is one of those things where if it's done really well, no one should notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like like graphic design is one of those things too, like if you do it perfectly, no one notices it. It doesn't catch your eye and it doesn't isn't glaring, and I think this is a good example of one of those moments where it shouldn't catch, you know, like like the. Um Christian fiction label, like it shouldn't catch people's eyes or, you know, like these things, it's just one of those things that takes a lot of thought. To make something so seamless and I appreciate it.
Anything else for? And any question? Oh, sorry. Yeah, there we go, uh questions or comments for IT? Hey, Wyatt.
Revisit one thing in the.
Yeah, of course.
Um I think in a previous month, I mentioned that um our leaders on the city management offices changed. Um it's now Redmond Jones, who actually is here today, um so thanks for stopping, Redmond, um he's. I would still say new, a new deputy city manager, um and I look forward to getting known better and sort of introducing more about library operations, but. This is a good chance to make a face-to-face um connection with.
You're welcome, but I'm glad you could be here. Uh let's see, I don't think we have any miscellaneous staff reports. Do we have Carol's? President's report to read for you, Carol, threats that she's not here. Uh the first person here shall refer to Carol.
I apologize for my somewhat poor attendance record in recent months. Thanks, Tom, for taking over during my absences. As you are meeting, I am hiking somewhere in the southern Appalachian Mountains in North Carolina. Like to thank ICPL for the opportunity to attend the recent I L A conference in Corvo, where I listened to a number of worthwhile presentations personally. I found the opening keynote address by Crystal Hayden to be especially thought-provoking. She talked about living life as a person of multiple marginalized identities, queer, deaf, and she suggests that because human beings are complicated, social justice work. Requires an expansive view of potentially disabling factors in the environment. As a bonus, the speaker's stand-up comedy skills elevated the presentation beyond thought-provoking to highly entertaining. I hope Robin and DJ also found the conference to be worthwhile. Thanks to the ICPL staff who led sessions on a variety of topics, it's unfortunate that many of the ICPL staff presentations were scheduled at the same time. So I was only able to attend one of them. Thanks to Robin for being part of one of these sessions and serving on the conference's speakers committee. Her dedication to promoting libraries and the role of trustees is laudable. At the November board meeting, I will be appointing the Director Evaluation Committee. Committee will have three members, hopefully with at least one member who has been through the process before. Committee has broad discretion to fashion the evaluation process in any way it sees fit. Committee's final report will be presented at the February meeting. Please contact me before the November meeting if you are willing to be a part of the committee. I'd rather appoint volunteers than draftees. In discussions with Ellsworth, I know that he has already given some thought to his goals for the upcoming year. And the evaluation process is the board's way of providing him with the feedback he deserves from us. Finally, as Ellsworth mentioned, Noah has submitted her resignation with the ICPL board. Changes in her personal life have necessitated a move away from Iowa City. In her message to me, she expressed that she's disappointed to be leaving us, just as she felt that she was beginning to grow into the role. Ellsworth will initiate the process with city council to find a replacement. That is the president's report.
I swear we just did the evaluation.
I know, it's like.
We did it like last month.
I I've heard there's the option of not doing. Pretty sure.
The next item of the agenda is announcements from members. Just like to recognize Sam with uh. Next month's packet, we can get the picture with the gavel and the hammer. Uh do you have any committee reports in the foundation?
No. I think the meeting was scheduled for September fifteenth, that was the last one, and I believe there's one again in November.
And communications were included in the packet. That press citizen article was a remarkable piece of local journalism, I just have to say, we don't. Have that many reporters that can do that thorough of. I was impressed with that.
I appreciated the framing of it as well, that it wasn't, you know, protest, the the framing was. The protesters were the problem, not the reason why they were protesting, so. Yeah.
We come to the consent agenda, which includes approving the um minutes from September and this first minutes for September. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved and a second.
I have seconds.
All in favor? Any opposed? And finally, we will set the agenda order for the November meeting. Uh that includes appointing the Director's Evaluation Committee. Uh and a policy review on collection development, departmental force.
I have a somewhat random question, um since Noah is leaving and I know our board is now saying, you said that a person identifying as. She now as removing board, is that going to continue? I think who decides? I know that we are keeping gender balanced, that's part of the policy, but. I don't know, it's facilitating into the future in state law, is that what it is? Okay, so it would take.
Legislative.
It would be legislative action to make that different.
I believe the the female identified is what we're asked, I I think that's what. I think that we could make a case for that at the city level, um if it was ever questioned, so I.
Just curious where that's coming from and also like. And we're never going to talk about it being different than that, but if it's state law, it's going to be a while.
Yeah, and it. More likely state action, you do remove a balance requirement to.
Right.
Broad, yeah, so.
Okay, just curious.
Okay, having completed our business.